Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing, this past week, the town of Greenwich lost one of its most dedicated employees, Joan Pride, who served in the Social Services Department for well over two decades, passed away. We want to remember Joan and her family, I believe, her sisters who work here at the town as well, and send our condolences to them and remember her good work in spirit here at the town of Greenwich. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. As I note, at every meeting, there are copies of the meeting's agenda as you come in the meeting room. It is a public meeting. It's not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call on anyone interested in an item to ask a question or make a brief comment. And again, the materials are on the table as you come in. The second item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The first set of minutes are from the 22nd of September. That was the regular meeting that was held. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
So move second.
Okay, without objection, three zero. The second set of minutes is from the meeting that was held on October the 6th, and that meeting specifically was to invoke Phase Two of the water restriction, mandatory restrictions. Is there any changes to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So move second.
Okay, without objection. Moving to three, updates. A lot of things happening in town. I wanted to... Starting it tonight, Roast Concentric. First item, on October 28th, there is going to be a program here at Town Hall in the Cone Room. It is sponsored by the First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee, as well as the family centers, Greenwich YMCA, YWCA, Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich, and they are going to be hosting a program that will take place from 9:30 to 12:30, and it will be run by the Anti-Defamation League and two of their presenters. And the subject is A World of Difference, is put on by the A World of Difference Institute, and it's really to look at the community and its diverse nature and its residents and hold a conversation, interactive conversation between all the parties, and it's part of the programming that the committee has developed over the last year, along with their, this year it'll be the eighth annual essay-writing contest. This committee has representation from the Greenwich Public Schools, and it has representation from all of these various not-for-profits, so it really brings together all the people who are supporting the communities within Greenwich, and it is a vehicle by which to have a robust and fulfilling conversation. And anyone who's interested in participating, Laura, if you're, Laura Erickson, welcome from the Board of Education. If any one of your members, or you'd like to come, it's that type of program, you can, you know, sign in and come, if you'd like to. We received some correspondence, in a nice way, from a member of the RTM, and she asked that we pass this along, and it has to do with the work that the folk, good folks in our Highway Department do. It was addressed to the Board of Selectmen and the Commissioner of Public Works and Highway Superintendent Joe Roberto, and it reads as follows, "I want to take this time to extend a note of thanks to you on behalf of myself and all our neighbors on the Booth cul-de-sac. I can tell you that these men are really on the ball and attentive. I was thinking, thinking about calling to ask if they could cut the vegetation overgrowth one last time before the change in weather. Before I had a chance to call, they were here. Just this past week, they were back again taking care of the sewer drains. Mind-blowing. They have been performing an exemplary job for us within the Chickahominy and Byram community, and I say this because I've not seen trash along the underpass, any roadkill sitting for days, and seeing the street sweeper cleaning Armstrong Court, Alexander Grange, and Lower Gary. It's nice to see not only a presence, but the results of how clean Districts Three and Four are looking when traveling through the, through the area daily. Jay Clifford for his proactive approach and his team, Ernie Ardry, Mike Sabia, Bob Lundgren, Joe Rich, Christian Marshon, Chad Weiss, Phil Vincoli, and my apologies if I left any of the men out of this note. All should be commended for a job well done. It has been a long time since the cul-de-sac where both districts have looked this clean, or that I have had to pick up the phone and ask. The neighbors and I are truly grateful and thank you. Please be sure to pass this thank you note along with these hard-working men and give a shout-out to them on your Ask the First Selectmen radio show." And that was signed by Don Fortunato and the Booth cul-de-sac neighbors. So very nice to see our employees recognized for their work. We often hear when people aren't satisfied, but when people take the time out to say positive things, I think it's important to pass it along. On November 2nd, mark your calendars, the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security is undertaking the 2016 Governors Emergency Planning and Preparedness Initiative, EPI. It's a statewide exercise, and it involves all of the municipalities, the service chiefs, the chief elected officials, town managers, local emergency management directors, school superintendent, public works, social services, recovery coordinator, and others. This is going to involve testing all of our communication systems, radios, landlines, cellphones, satellite phones, or Everbridge. We're going to be tying into Webby OC, which is the state system that talks about, you know, that communicates the incidents, events. If you think of it in terms of what we witnessed down in the South with the hurricanes, you saw the governors giving those public briefings, but behind that were all the probably city managers, mayors, whatever titles they hold, involved with their, their team. So we're going to be working closely with all the folks, and again, Laura, it's great that you're here, because I would invite you to come to that as well, if you'd like.
November 2nd?
November 2nd. We're going to be reaching out and doing more notice. We just got this earlier this week. But it's an opportunity for us to review our town's local emergency op plans, identify roles and responsibilities of key personnel, our procedure for declaring a local emergency. We look at sheltering, staffing, our evacuation plans, our make-safe protocol, our public messaging. It's basically, it's a drill to be sure that we are prepared. So that's on November 2nd, and there'll be more to come on that. Also, the Human Resources Department is once again holding what they refer to as the Leadership They just completed one of these. It's a, it's pretty much a year-long, a nine-month program. This one is consisting of several workshops. Subjects include interpersonal communication and listening skills, coaching, counseling, and challenging personnel, how to address problematic behaviors, supervising a diverse workforce, conflict resolution, problem-solving, balancing multiple priorities, creating effective relationships with your chain of command, and change management. So it will begin October 25th, and will run through July 11th. In terms of the water situation, we continue to see regular updates from Aquarian. They are tracking their distribution from the Putnam Treatment Facility. All of their data has shown a reduction in the millions of gallons of water per day that are going out. Water goes out from there, not only to residents in Greenwich, but to Westchester in their sister company Suez, which they have an agreement to provide a certain amount of water to. They also have restricted their distribution to them. From the state level, the Commissioner of Public Health, who regulates this, has written to the New York State Public Health Commissioner and advised them of the situation and asked them to take complimentary action. So we expect, we're going to continue to see lower utilization. That goes to say we still have a serious situation. I know the police had somewhere in the vicinity of 270 calls that have gone out and spoken to people, listening to the emergency radio. I've, I've heard it, people are telling on their neighbors, I mean, and asking them to go check it out, but clearly they're doing their job, and I know that Denise also complimented them on that as well. Finally, there is a magazine published, for those in the boating community, it's called The End Sign, pronouncing that right, Boating Education Fund and Safety, and they actually featured the Greenwich Power Squadron, who conducts safety courses here within the town. It was part of Safe Boating Week, and it was nice to see that Greenwich was recognized as taking a proactive effort in this, particularly in light of some recent incidents. So I want to compliment Nancy Ryan, as well as Andy Cummings, as in our Marine Division, were on hand for this, Lieutenant John Brown, and this was in their October issue, Fall I think that concludes updates. Barb, did we miss anything? Veterans Day, I believe we'll have another meeting before then, but the Veterans Day program is developing nicely. We have a veterans committee that not only looks at celebratory things, but a more broader role. But the, but the program will take place beginning with the March, then it will then go to the memorial at, in front of Havemeyer this year, and once that concludes, the Improved Order of Redmond, or the Redmond Home Association is hosting for veterans a very nice lunch, which they're going to feature, the USO Girls for their entertainment. So it's going to be a wonderful day to celebrate veterans. This year's focus is on the disabled veteran, and so I would encourage folks, if they can, to come out for all our portion of that event. If you're not able to make that portion, there's certainly the Byram Vets Parade that takes place at 7:00, beginning at the Vets Hall and goes down New Lebanon Avenue, to Williams Street, to Delavan, it makes a, a loop. And so that gives you another opportunity to come out and celebrate our veterans.
What time does that start?
I believe that starts at 7:00 PM.
No, no, the, I'm running out.
Is it 9:00, Barb, 9:30?
I believe it's 9:30, too. I mean, it marches down right to the monument at 11:00. There's the one, I buy the Havemeyer issue, not by the rest of the hardware.
Correct. It's, so 10:30. Yeah, they're going to, they're going to mobilize earlier than that, but...
Riverside is at 9:00, right? Riverside School? Riverside School is at 9:00?
It's not at the same time.
It's at 8:45.
8:45, okay.
8:45. Also, I just saw, we did receive, and I believe someone from your paper, Ken, is covering this, but we did receive...
Your paper?
Fitch Credit Rating Agency is issuing their prospectus on the debt issuance. We can go into it further when I speak to, I want to say, is it...
Michaela.
Michaela. But they affirmed Greenwich's AAA rating and outlook is stable, very different than what they just came out and said about the state, but we're fortunate that, that, you know, the management practices, the financial practices, the climate here is very good, although they do highlight several of the challenges that we do have, which relate to the overall economic condition, the condition within the state, as well as our, you know, post-retirement liabilities are often referenced. So that is the first one that came out of Business Wire. Did you have anything for updates, anything that you've done, or events? Any events? Anything happen at GEMS?
The retirement.
Oh, did I mention, we know that, did we mention that last time? We gave Charlie kudos, Charlie Tufts' retirement as the executive director. We did have a meeting with her this week, with the town, with the town administrator concerning their facilities, and we're beginning to look at fulfilling the requests made by the BET for evaluating space for them. So we will look forward to working with Charlie over the next several months, as she winds down her tremendous career with the town through GEMS. Okay, we have nothing under old business. Under new business, we had a request from Selectman Marzullo to discuss the creation of an ad hoc committee to look at current and future soil contamination issues. For those not familiar with the way the Board of Selectmen works, the Board of Selectmen has provisions by which any member can, within five days' notice of the First Selectmen, place an item on the agenda for discussion and consideration, and this is, this falls with under that. The language does say items that are germane. Certainly, that's, that's always a debatable point, but I do think this is an issue of town-wide consequence, and therefore, it's on our agenda today. I just want to note that there's been a lot happening on this issue as it relates to fields. As we know, we are working through several issues in town that have come forth as the town undertook construction. The most notable one, I would say, is at Greenwich High School. The other is at Williams Street, as it relates to the New Lebanon Project, and then, of course, now at Western Middle School. In terms of the folks that have been engaged and involved in this process, there are many, and they come from the realms of the town administration, namely our Commissioner of Public Works, our Director of Parks and Rec, the Director of Environmental Health, Mr. Long, as well as the Director. It also includes the schools, their facilities, Operations Manager, Mr. ...
Ron Matten.
Ron Matten, thanks. And Jim Ricky, their Managing Director of Operations, as well as the Superintendent and their subsidiary Support Staff with Communications, and the boards. I think the boards also play a key role in this. So those are the, those are the people presently on the field, no pun intended, working on the issue, as well as two outside entities that are contracted by the town. So it's important to note that, right now, we have engaged through our legal department, Carter and English, which is a law firm that has a full-service environmental health and safety practice, and have attorneys who are specialized in that area. They get involved in all of the elements of environmental issues, due diligence evaluations, regulatory compliance, and so forth, permitting, licensing, and they've been the real appoint person with the regulatory agencies. In addition, we have had the firm Langen and Associates involved with Western. Langen is a internationally-recognized firm, quite extensive. They have divisions that specialize in site characterization and remediation solutions. They go about assessing the cost and complexity of remediation through feasibility analysis. They identify the technical, financial, and regulatory challenges of proposed remediation projects, and they develop a plan that promotes efficient use of resources through technology. So they're, they're also contracted for. And then finally, we have the regulatory agencies that oversee this. Right now, we've been working most closely with the Department of Public Health at the state level. They have been very cooperative and helpful in assuring the town and the schools that there is no direct health risk at the Western Middle School field. That was stated very emphatically, multiple times, notably at the forum that was held at Western several weeks ago. However, once, once constituents are found, it has been made clear that then it gets turned over to the Department of Environmental and Energy, Energy and Environmental Protection, for which they have a different charge, and their charge is, once something is known, is to see to it that it's addressed properly. So those are currently all the players on the field who are working on this, and I say that to kind of give segue to my colleague here, who has his own approach, or wants to talk about his approach to it. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have outlined a draft proposal, that's in the back, for anyone that wants that. Once again, I emphasize, it is a draft proposal. It is open to suggestions, obviously. I encourage that from my two colleagues, and I also request, request respectively, that they vote in the affirmative. While this may be a simple draft, when I say simple, it's, it's not, in the sense, it's a very complex issue, hence why I believe a committee to advise this board is warranted. I sent that on around September 29th, September 30th. It includes the proposal, the charge, the rationale, and the committee members, that Peter actually talked about, that many departments, state agencies, the First Selectmen's office already doing so, it's just combining all together and getting them all in the same room at the same time. I would like to go over some of the suggested questions for the committee to pursue. Once again, this is open to more questions, less questions, debate, et cetera, in no particular order. It says, once again, these are some of the questions. How should the issue of contaminated soil be explored? Does the town survey and test all town-owned properties? Does the town only test property at the time of capital projects? What is the impact on the public schools and their budget if remediation is required? What is the impact to the overall taxpayer? What are the potential positive consequences of proactively identifying contaminated soil? And what are the potential negative consequences of proactively identifying contaminated soil? How might a funding be structured? Can money be saved, long-term, if contaminated soil issue are addressed proactively? Then, some questions, more of a suggestion, somehow to develop a protocol that is Greenwich-specific in regards to testing results, offering clarification of state interpretation, when testing results exceed state guidelines, but doesn't require immediate remediation. Future, future capital projects in areas that could be identified early, that may have concerns, what are other towns doing? Greenwich is not unique to the situation, and our federal state money is available through grant allocations. So I, I am suggesting to sit on this board, many of the people who Peter, the First Selectmen, has suggested, in terms of who sits there, I would like to, if this is voted in the affirmative, to work with my colleagues to suggest, actually, specific people. That I did not specifically address or go over. I have some people in mind, but once again, I would like the input from the First Selectmen and Selectmen Tonner, if, if this is approved. People from the Board of Health, the BET, Health Department, the BOE, the RTM, Representative Law, Parks and Recs, also individuals from the general public. And once again, the charge and rationale are both here, and once again, this is not, you know, in the end, you know, once this is explored, and once we answer some of these questions, I can only see, I see this as a positive step, providing, you know, information back to this board, so then we can make more, maybe, informed decisions. This is, and maybe in the end, too, we will find, this, this committee will then come back to us and say that proactively testing is too expensive, or is, and we should not be doing that. I think there is, I think, once again, this is only positive to report back to this board that's not binding, and I would hope my two colleagues would agree, offer suggestions, and then, once again, support and vote in the affirmative.
Great, thank you. John, did you have something? So, we could look at some of the questions, because we think we have some of the answers now. Ideally, as I said, I think we have pretty much all of the requisite parties engaged. I think what Mr. Marzullo is striving to do is perhaps formalize it and make it a little bit more cohesive, but certainly the questions that are posed are ones that can, and perhaps have been already asked. So in looking at, like, when, what, and how to sample, that's something that certainly, I think, with the existing resources, we could get a more formal response to. Right now, the town addresses these on a case-by-case basis, because that is how the environmental investigation is being done. As you go through and look at a site, and you begin to disturb the site, you undertake what is known as Phase One and Phase Two, versus arbitrarily going out and just selecting sites because you think something is there, has been stated both by folks in-house and externally, as not a, not a wise approach. So we can certainly pose these questions to those folks and get their input, without necessarily forming a committee, because we already have the group working. That's just my sense. And also, I think it's important to note that not all contaminated soil is a health risk. I think that's another thing that I will say, my personal opinion, and I'm giving my personal opinion because I just listen to people, most people in the general population who raise this issue with me recognize that this is not unique to Greenwich, that it's, as Denise Savage, our Conservation Director, says, it's, it's pretty much in every established community that's been here a while, where there's been redevelopment and so forth, in that, in many cases, disrupting materials is when you have to engage in tests. But if, if the materials are deep below the surface, unless someone's digging down and ingesting them, they're not going to necessarily be of harm. And that was corroborated by the State Department of Health. And then I think the other question that comes up is, how do you really manage this from a global perspective? If the impetus is to provide some sense of assurance, do you then say to people who have private institutions, gee, you need to test yours? Now, wait a minute, you live next to the place, you're a private property owner, you need to test yours. It just becomes wildly onerous, without any conclusion, as I said, because in some cases, leaving things that may be there doesn't affect anybody. So we can only focus really on our situation, and I think, again, the questions posed can certainly be answered with the combined resources that we have. This, did you have a question, Ms. Kilgallen?
Actually, sent an email this week.
Oh, I didn't see it, no.
Claire Kilgallen, just for everybody else's benefit watching, I'm the New Lebanon PTA President. I was on the feasibility team, I just, just to Drew's point, in terms of addressing, looking at whatever you plan to do holistically, since it talks about current and future, I think there needs to be a real communications plan set in place, because I can only speak from my experience with regard to New Lebanon, that being very cognizant of the experience at the high school, when we were doing feasibility, we did a preliminary Phase One in May of 2014, May of 2014. That still remains undone. The work is still undone. So I, I think that communicating what the plan is and understanding all those steps in between is important. I understand more of it because I'm involved in many aspects of the project, but I don't think people understand that you dig the soil, you test, then you come up with remediation plan, you get the money, you dig, then you see how that goes, and then you might have to do it again, and how does that work? And I think that's the, the cycle of, of the process isn't clearly articulated generally. And then, more specifically, with regard to press releases, at least with regard to the Williams Street Ball Field, the New Lebanon Field, you know, there's, we got, we had great news, trucks are coming, work's being done in August, and then work stopped at the beginning of September, and it's radio silence. And I sent an email earlier this morning, forwarding a note that I had sent to the Board of Ed and the Superintendent, asking, because there's the project itself, and then there's also the side fact that the work has stopped, and the only sidewalk on Williams Street is partly out of commission, so we have a dangerous, potentially dangerous situation because of the diversion. There are no, like, balusters, whatever you call those. You know, in New York City, when they divert you off the sidewalk and they put those sort of plastic rails so you don't get hit by cars, there's no such thing on Williams Street. So people are literally walking out, if they observe the pylons and the sawhorses, they're actually walking out into the road.
Claire, was this, when was this? Because I was there yes, yesterday, or the day before.
I did not drive that way today.
But, because I didn't, what I saw was the, the fencing all around the field, and they've excavated down Leb... excavated down levels, and there's little flags, but the sidewalk that was only put in, like, maybe, two, three years ago, that was open. Are you talking about that one?
Yeah, there's a piece of it that's blocked.
You come in off of New Lebanon, and you hit the pad, where, you know, the...
Not on that side, it's on the Williams Street side. So if you're looking, if you're at St. Paul's, and you know that, their parking lot...
Yes.
Right across from the, is that somebody's house? The White House, right across from there, on the field side, about midway across the field, the sidewalk on Williams Street, on the south side, is blocked by pylons and sowhorses.
Well, I mean, you make a good point. I mean, the communication, I have to say, I think on Western was exceptional, and it gave great...
And that was what triggered my email, that Western was, like, so awesome.
Kudos to Kim Eves, and this, and I, as I said to Laura, and we met last week and talked to her on a number of things, but I said this to the Superintendent. Aside from the issue, just in terms of the governance and the collaboration, I thought it was second to none, how people came together, they discussed the issue, they engaged the professionals, and they communicated out what was happening. But I would, Williams Street has been somewhat of a hybrid, given the mixed jurisdiction, and I do think that you're right, I mean, I don't think there's anything incorrect of what you're saying, and so perhaps that's one of the outcomes from this, because I think what Drew is saying is that, you know, communication underlies all this. So that's been under the...
Do we know, how come it's been delayed? Because you just sent the email today, so I don't know the...
I mean, I don't know. The last status I heard was that they had done the work that they were commissioned to do, and then they did more testing, and they had to come up with more, they had to reassess and see what additional work needed to be done. So then, you have to go through the whole delineation plan, that has to get sent to the state, and then it has to get reviewed, and, you know, so then you, but, but we don't know if, if the, I don't know if the delineation plan was submitted. Whereas with Western, we know, based upon that press release, that the delineation report was done and has been sent, and we're waiting for the state to, you know, to its review.
Okay. We will, we will find, I mean, Commissioner, I spoke with the Superintendent on this just, like, two days ago, and Laura and I talked about this, I think, as well, but I think Commissioner Seabird, in fairness to her, was just given that note to kind of get communication back out, because she's generally very good at it.
It's just, I get, I get it, because parents ask me what's going on, and if I could tell them something, I would...
No, it's a fair point. It's a fair point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
I think another thing, too, that, in looking at this, in terms of the timing, you know, we have been at the mercy of the federal regulatory agencies, at least that's what I've been told from people involved more deeply with MISA and elsewhere, that, you know, there's so much we can do, and then we're dependent upon their response back. And particularly at the state level, you wonder if any of the reductions in personnel affect their ability. I know, like, we heard a little bit of that when we were dealing with Western, that with changes happening there, federal, I can't speak to, I mean, it's just still mammoth, but that's why we have someone like Jane Warren, who's with McCarter English, really as our expert, but your point's well taken. So Drew, do you want to make a motion?
I do. If we could, once again, respectively, ask one of my two colleagues, one, to support my proposal, once again, draft proposal, in creation of an ad hoc committee to advise the Board of Selectmen on current and future soil contamination issues.
Any second? Okay. No. So what I will say, though, is, as I said in the opening, is that I think the questions are ones that we have the folks who we could direct them to now. So we're not formally establishing a committee, per se, we are bringing your ideas to them. And I think that's an important step in that direction. And, again, I would encourage folks to check out the Langen site and see their capabilities, as well as, if you're interested in seeing, the law firm the town uses, McCarter, M.C., capital C-A-R-T-E-R, English, you can drill down and see the level of expertise and experience that they've provided to us. And Claire, thank you for your point about communication. Then we'll have to work with Amy, in fairness to her, to get that element of Williams Street on, hopefully, we can get that done.
Thank you, Claire.
Get the project done there. Okay, so there's nothing else under New Business, under Appointments and Nominations? Is there anything, John, that you have, or Drew, or?
Not right now.
No.
So we have Executive Session, we have, I believe, three tax appeal settlements, and we have four other pieces of litigation, I believe, two are personal injury suits, and two are personnel-related suits, if I recall. So that's two, four, seven items. I want to thank you, Laura, for being here.
Thank you, Laura.
And, again, look forward to meeting you again. Claire, thank you very much for your service on the committee. I mentioned it in my State of the Town last week, the Building Committee, how amazing work you do. Thank you.
Laura, I don't think there's anything education-related on Executive Session, there isn't, no.
Mr. D'Andrea, nice to see you. It's two in a row, it's good to see you up and well.
Thanks for the press showing up. We always appreciate it.
We're glad to be there. I have no other to do on Thursday.
Good morning. This is a resumption of the October 13th regular meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. The board has just come out of Executive Session, whereby we heard reports on several matters of pending litigation, and at this time, we are prepared to take action on property tax settlements. The first item is docket number HHBCV 136024841S, and it is Topping Pond LLC versus Town of Greenwich, house and land at 51 Bering Hill Road. This is a settlement that is favorable to the town, because there is no refund of taxes as a result of the settlement, since the reduction of taxes as a result of the reduction in assessments will be taken as a credit of approximately $19,720 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff prevailed on the basis of the appraisals that were done, the refund would have been in excess of $39,000, plus interest and costs. In this case, the assessor's value was $2,111,490 for land and buildings and improvements. The settlement assessed value was $1,627,500. So those are looking just at the assessed values. So I move the settlement as a credit of approximately $19,720 against future tax.
Seconded?
Seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is related to that one, is Topping Pond II LLC, land at Bering Hill Road, docket number HHBCV 136024840S. And this is a settlement favorable to the town, because there will be no refund of taxes as a result of the settlement, since the reduction of taxes as a result of the reduction in assessments will be taken as a credit of approximately $26,660 against future tax payments. It is important to note that if the plaintiff had prevailed on the appraisal, the refund would be in excess of $41,000, plus interest and costs. This settlement covers the grand list years of 2012 through 2014, on which the assessor's assessed value was $1,748,180 versus a settlement assessed value of $980,000. And then, the 2015 grand list, $976,360 was the assessor's assessed value versus the settlement assessed value of $910,000. I move that we approve the settlement as a credit of the $26,660 against future tax payments.
Seconded?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the third property tax settlement today is Mebo Khan and Shahida Khan versus Town of Greenwich, land building and improvements at 47 Round Hill Road, docket number HHBCV And this is a case of settlement that is favorable to the town, and there'll be no refund of taxes as a result of the settlement, since the reduction of taxes as a result of the redemption, reduction in assessment will be taken as a credit of $9,882. The assessor's assessed value for land, building, and improvements on the 2015 grand list was The settlement assessed value arrived was $5,040,000. And I move the settlement at the credit of $9,882. So moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Finally, we have a case that is a defect personal injury matter, that is being adjudicated through the Superior Court, related to a highway defect, and attorney... Where'd it go? Pardon me? The plaintiff is Minerva Lachira. This is scheduled for a trial management conference on the 20th, which is a week from today. At this time, having heard the brief in Executive Session, would move to authorize the Attorney in House, Fred Durango, to have authority up to, up to $50,000. I so moved. Seconded by Mr. Tonner. All in favor?
Aye.
That matter, of course, went before the Law Committee of the BET, as well as the Claims Committee, and each have given them parameters on which to negotiate in the settlement conference. There being no further business to come before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sue.
Okay, without objection.